Well, I'll call the meeting to order and hand it over to Lisa.
All right, welcome, ResJ members. Thank you for being here with us tonight for our special meeting, and thank you, members of the community who are joining us as well. It is my pleasure to be here with you all. And Anne, if I could ask you to do a roll call, please? Alexandra?
Here.
Griselda? Liesel? Serena?
Here.
Sophia?
Here.
Tayou?
Here.
Veronica?
Here.
Bruce?
Here. Back.
Thank you. Do members approve our agenda for the evening? Okay, I'll need a motion, please.
I motioned to approve the agenda. I second that motion.
Anne, can I have a roll call, please? Yes, Alexandra? Yes. Griselda? Serena?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
Tayou?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Bruce? Before I start with item A, we are here on a very important day. A day that, from my understanding, actually contributed to the launching of this committee, and an incredible movement really around the world. And so if you aren't aware, this is the one-year anniversary of George Floyd's death, and people around our country and around the world are commemorating him this week. And I just read his brother's statement to Congress shortly after he passed. And in his very powerful statement, he called on all of us to come together in unity and to come together, not in his words, but to end oppression for all people. And I think it's quite an important night that ResJ actually is holding a special meeting on this very day, this very evening. And I would like to ask us to take a moment of silence, please, in honor of George Floyd and his entire family, and our entire country who has mourned his loss and the pain that racism causes ourselves, our families, and our communities. Thank you. I'd like to personally dedicate my facilitation to the memory of George Floyd, and it is my greatest wish that I do his memory justice in all of my work. So it'll be an emotional evening for me, and I am grateful to be here with you tonight. Thank you for taking that moment of silence. We're on item A, our opening, and I will start us off with our newly revised land acknowledgement written in partnership with the Coast Miwok people. The Racial Equity and Social Justice Committee pays respect to the Miwok peoples' past, present, and future, and their continuing presence in Marin County and throughout the Miwok diaspora. We acknowledge that we are located in the unceded ancestral lands, the Coast Miwok people of present-day Marin County, and offer our care and gratitude for the land, water, air, and living beings here. We are committed to resisting colonialism and our ingrained colonial mindset and the imbalance with Mother Earth by honoring Miwok heritage through the support of Indigenous-led programming. In addition, we fully intend to move deeper than land acknowledgements and performative actions towards truly honoring the Coast Miwok people heritage, making that heritage visible and present. We commit to that by elevating and taking part in opportunities to make policy changes and participate in direct actions related to Indigenous rights. Thank you to the members of the Coast Miwok Tribal Council for your consultation in the drafting of this land acknowledgement. If we could all just take a deep breath before we move on into our meeting. All right, thank you so much. So, volunteers for note taker, timekeeper, and our process observer. But note taker? Just to support Anne? Can we have a volunteer? Thank you, Veronica. You've become our regular and a timekeeper to support my facilitation, please.
I can do that.
I saw Serena and Griselda tied, so one is timekeeper, can the other be process observer?
Serena, what do you want?
I think it was Tayou, not me.
Oh. Oh, Wes, I'm sorry, I wasn't looking at the screen.
I was like, I didn't do anything.
You're like, I thought I recognized the voice, my apologies. Tayou, what would you like?
Timekeeper. I did process observing last time.
You're like, let me be clear. Griselda, are you okay with process observer? Thank you so much. All right, and Anne, if you could do the honors of sharing our norms, please. I won't read them tonight, I'll ask that you take a look at our norms and choose one to hold in honorary, in honor of George Floyd this evening. And when you have it, just a thumbs up. Okay. Sophia, are you good? You can just say yes.
Yes.
Okay, and I want to leave you out, and if I do, please remind me, everybody. All right, Anne, you could take us off-screen now, thank you. So we'll move on to item B, and this is a follow-up after the racist incident that occurred in San Onkelmo. And we will have a short dialogue and brainstorm how to create a safe space to do anti-racist work, and then there is potential for possible recommendations to town council as an action item. And timekeeper, this is 30 minutes. And I want to offer the floor, if there's any ResJ members who would like to share the incident for any members of the public who aren't aware of what happened. And then, because we're a pretty small group now, we'll have, we'll do one whip-around where we'll just do one minute of sharing, so we can bring all voices into the conversation, and then I'll open it up for dialogue. Veronica?
I just see that Liesel is joined as a participant and wanted to, maybe she didn't get the link to join us.
Thank you, I didn't, I can't see that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Liesel. Are you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, perfect, I'm so glad you could join us, welcome. Did you hear our item B, or shall I repeat it?
You should repeat it, sorry, I was on another public meeting, and then I realized I didn't have the link, and, okay, thank you.
So we're on item B, and we are going to have a follow-up after the racist incident that happened in San Onkelmo. We'll have time for open dialogue to brainstorm ways to create a safe space to do anti-racist work, and then if ResJ feels so moved, there is an opportunity to put an action item forward to possibly make recommendations to town council. And then I just opened the floor, if anybody would like to share what happened in San Onkelmo, just for the benefit of any citizens listening that may not be aware of the incident. Is there anyone who would like to share from ResJ, or would you like, Veronica?
Just want to make sure that, Alexandra, did you want to speak to it? I'm happy to, just start us off, though. Okay. Um, I'd love to actually start with the statement from Brian Colbert that came out last Thursday from the San Onkelmo Town Newsletter, in that he said that "The people of Marin County share basic core values of tolerance, understanding, and racial harmony. It is appealing to think of racism as an evil that exists only in other parts of the country, but racism exists here, too. On Friday, a San Onkelmo resident made violent racist threats against me. He used words that we associate with the Jim Crow South, not Northern California in the 21st century. The Central Marin Police Authority deserves praise for dealing with this unfortunate situation in a swift, competent, and appropriate manner. I am grateful to my friends and neighbors who have reached out to me with messages of support. As mayor, I believe I am speaking for all of us when I say that racism is not welcome in San Onkelmo. We are better than this. I am confident that our entire community will unite to condemn these racist threats." And just briefly, you know, the town hall had received calls from three different messages that were left on the town's main phone line that contained threats that were racially charged in nature, and that targeted Mayor Colbert. And he has been, he was detained, and I'm not so positive of the current state of what's happening with him, but they are, the district attorney's office is looking into hate crime violations.
And I would just add, the nature of the threats was extremely profoundly deeply serious. They weren't just verbal threats, there was physical violence threatened and threats against his family. So I think you might have missed this part, Liesel, but what we will do tonight is just take one minute for everybody to go around and be able to speak on this, really thinking about the opportunity to listen and learn from your team members right now about any thoughts you'd like to share in relationship to that incident. And then we'll open it up for dialogue, we have about 30 minutes. We'll move from dialogue into a brainstorm to try to synthesize what you might want to move forward, if anything, for recommendations to town council. Any questions? All right, so who would like to, I'm gonna take volunteers, not call on people, just given the content that we're talking about, so would anybody like to volunteer to go first? Okay, Alexandra, then Griselda.
Uh, so I think for me, this event, or this incident, was a wake-up call. I, of course, am aware of violence that goes on within just our society in general in terms of race, but even as someone very aware of the presence of racism in Marin County, there's like this idea of like a little bubble that we live in, that we're in a very, like, generally liberal place, and I think for me, it was a reminder that we're not exempt. Fairfax isn't exempt, San Onkelmo isn't, Marin County isn't. And this was not an empty threat. I mean, multiple weapons were found in his possession, so that's very scary, that's very real. I personally felt extremely unsafe. I don't think of San Onkelmo as any different than Fairfax, you take a step and you're in one or the other. And so for me, like, knowing that our videos, our names are very public, it was very concerning, and I imagine it was concerning for everyone, no matter what race or identity, it's very hard to publicly speak up, especially with some of the feedback we've gotten from the community. It can be very scary, and it was really scary for me, and quite difficult to process. So I'm hoping that this conversation, although only 30 minutes, we can kind of come up with a plan to make sure we are all safe in terms of what we can do to keep each other feeling that way and support each other, but also brainstorm ways that the town can support us. Yeah.
Thank you. And then for our timekeeper, given the content, I'm not going to stop anybody, timekeeper, but if you could just give us a signal that, a gentle reminder there at one minute, and I will not stop you, but just in the interest of making sure we can move through our agenda tonight. So Griselda, you're up next.
Alexandra spoke to a lot of what I felt. There is this way in which we want to think certain things, and in which some of us have to think, because it allows us to feel safer. And so this, this was just a reminder that people with guns who are angry are very dangerous, and they're not all in Texas, you know, or Mississippi. They're here, and, and so where, where my mind went initially was, let's, I want us to have a plan. We cannot be made safe completely, right? But I want, I want us to have a plan. It seems like San Onkelmo police did the right thing. This person called the actual office, which made things easier, I think. But I'm wondering, how would it be for one of us to get a threat? And, and so I really want to think, like, what could be in place? Could we have? I'm not sure, a number to call, like, could we? Would we be heard when we say, you know, this was scary? What if we don't have a recording? You know, we, I would like us to think about those things as a group, and to have some sort of plan in place. That would make me feel better, although it's not 100% safe, but it would, it would be important in knowing that it is taken seriously, and that it matters.
Thank you, Griselda. Tayou?
I don't, I think both Griselda and Alexandra spoke, said what I feel as to what the town can do to keep us safe, or what we can do to keep ourselves safe. I mean, one of the things that I'd also like to find out is, is if someone requests, I found out this week that someone, in relation to this school name change, someone requested, did a public records request, and so, and then took screenshots and put our emails, so our names are up on Facebook on a private, private page, and I would like to know if the town of Fairfax, if somebody requests a public records request of our emails, if the town will tell us that and give us information of who and when and how it will be used. I think that's a really important thing, it's not, does not feel safe that my name is out there on a, on a site that is very, very contentious. And I can just imagine what would happen with our, with our communications, with what we're, we talk about here. It is very scary. When I found out about what happened to Mayor Colbert, I just, you know, he's the mayor, and here we are, all sitting here, trying to do this work, and it, and it doesn't matter if we're black or brown or white. We're, we're doing this work, and people don't like it, and it's very obvious people don't like it from the comments that come in. And so it does not feel safe right now.
Thank you, Tayou. Sophia, if you'd like to speak, you can, I believe you can still raise your hand with your video off, and then it would let me know, and I can call on you.
Okay.
Other thoughts? Before we open it up for conversation? And if you'd like to pass, that's all right, too, if you'll let me know.
Bruce's hand is up.
Bruce, sorry, I thought you were thinking with your hands.
Think sometimes. I just, I just wanted to add a little bit more information that I've understood, in case it's of any help to people to have a tiny bit more information, but we don't have much. One thing is that the, Dave Donery, the town manager in San Onkelmo, has said that the, that he, they know this person that did this, and that they believe that, for one thing, I've heard that he has some issues, some mental health issues, and has done things before that they've seen him before. And for another thing, they, they felt that it was something that would be restricted to, that San Onkelmo was sort of targeted in that person's mind. But that's all, that's all I have to add to what we've heard tonight, there's not a lot, I don't really understand the status, just as was mentioned, of where he is now. He was, according to the press, released without condition, but that was kind of a vague statement, and I don't really know what that meant, and he, there were guns confiscated, and I don't know whether they've been returned to him or what. And he had a gun restraining order put on him, and I don't know whether that was taken off or what. It's all, I'm not sure the status, but anyway, that's just, I thought, I would just share what little bit I know, other than what's already been said. And I, I, I too take this very seriously. I, of course, know Mayor Colbert, and he was elected the same time I was, and is now mayor the same year that I'm trying to figure out how to do this, so I feel a lot of, sort of like we're in parallel paths, and, and he's really very active, does a lot of amazing work in San Onkelmo, and it just seems out of the blue, I don't know why anyone would, what anyone would have against anything that he does, he just works for the town tirelessly. So, that's a question that you raised, Tayou, about public records requests, I can look into that, and try to find out how that would work, and, or whether it was even possible for someone to get, because I know when you all were applying for this committee, we on the council got your applications with the, with all the information redacted, so I've never, I've never seen your email addresses other than that have been shared by you, so, but I can check on it.
Thank you, Bruce. Any other thoughts before I open the floor? I'm gonna do, Griselda, I'm gonna do everybody once, and then I'll open the floor for, for conversation, so is there anyone else who would, who would like to go? Veronica?
Thank you for issuing the gathering us for this meeting with this as our first topic, Alexandra, I really appreciate the, in as much as it's proactive, you know, really acknowledging what this means for all of us, but especially the folks of color. Those of you who, you know, feel aware of the heightened threat and reality that that might come from being on a committee like this, and being at the intersection of being a person of color on this committee as well, and really hear that and feel committed to advocating for what you need to feel more safe. So know that whatever it is that we come away with in this conversation, both within the capacity that I can as a committee member, and as a member of the public, that I will, I will be behind that for you, without question. And you know, mildly off-topic, but it'll be a quick statement, just feels like, you know, the reality that, that, that question, Bruce, of like whether or not the restriction of our, being able to have arms, if you have a mental health history, just reminds me of how much work we have to do, and, you know, at a larger level, that that, that shouldn't even be a question, and that's just so marking that as, as policy work. And do, yeah, I'm curious, is it necessary, as members on a committee through the town, are our emails actually available to the public, and so I'm grateful that you're gonna find that out, Bruce? I know that our names listed on the website, I'm curious, is it absolute law that our full names are on the website, or is it possible to have our first name and last initial, for instance, and if that would help any?
I'm told that the-
I'm in it, Bruce, I'm sorry, I'm gonna stop you till we open the floor, I just, I'm really trying to give everybody an opportunity to speak their truth about this incident, and I'll open it up in just a minute, just a minute. Go ahead, Veronica.
Thanks, and that's a reminder for me to not go too far, because I'm speaking my mind, not suggesting things, but just feel, in that vein, aware that there's, there's gotta be ways in which we can continue to really button up all the hatches that we're able to, to make sure that every step we can take to preserve anonymity to the degree that it feels like it allows folks to feel safer. And really am committed to doing what that means for everybody. I guess the last thing I'll say is I, I believe that there's room for us to improve on that in this committee, in the way that our town holds the information, I don't know where, what that line is, but I also feel this curious kind of tension around being public, like, signing up for a public role, and the inherent risk that's present within that, in giving yourself a platform where members of the, of a community can see and engage with your name or with your face. And, and I think that there's ways in which we can not feel so exposed on this committee, and at the same time recognize there's, yeah, I'm just curious, like, where that, you know, where that lives, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Veronica. Sophia?
Yeah, um, I was not aware of this incident until today. I go to school in San Onkelmo, at the school where we've been having this name change situation going on, and I'm kind of, I also worry that this was not mentioned or brought to the attention to the students of color by any administration at the school. In the last two months, I've had two events where I have had racial- Events where I have had racial epithets shouted at me, one where someone physically. Touched my car that I was in. And it just feels like. There's this anger in Marin that's kind of like. Growing and.
It's. It's. Terrifying and I really want to continue to do this work. But. I have to think about. Not only me, but. My family. It's not difficult to find. Where people live. Immortals, not difficult to find people's emails. It's not difficult. To find the information. You don't need a P R A for that. And I've already had. People from the Save the Name group. Like Ty said, trying to find. Our personal information and. I just. I'm not sure. If. I can emotionally. Handle this anymore. So.
Thank you so much, Sophia, for sharing and, and all your feelings are valid. I'd like to offer just a moment of quiet, please, for us to deeply hear what she just shared. And Sophia, I'd like to ask. Are you, are you with anybody right now? Do you have adults there with you?
Uh, yes, with my mom.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure that you're taken care of. Uh, so if we could just take a 30 seconds, please. Thank you, everyone. And Sophia, I'd like you to hear from me that we are witnessing you right now. We are standing witness with you to your testimony. Thank you.
Lisa, I just want you to know, we only have seven minutes left in the 30 minutes.
Thank you. We saw. We still had her hand up and then Serena.
Well, thank you, Sophia. That was. Yeah. I, I wanted to thank Bruce for the, the letter that went out in today's. Town newsletter, just because I think the more that we have the authority of the town sort of expressing. Concern and support around these issues, the, the better it will be. I've been really shocked by the rage in our community in general. From some people that. Asked around this issue. And, you know, I'm aware that from having advocated for affordable housing here, never having done public work like this before that. When you speak up, it really exposes you to people and then everything you say is on the public record when you're. In one of these Brown Act meetings. And so. That for me, and I'm a white person, it was incredibly scary when I first spoke up. I really. Became fearful of leaving the house for a while. I'm considering the hot button issues that I've been speaking up about. So. I don't pretend to imagine what it's like to feel that that. Anger would be directed at me because of simply who I am, not just because of a political belief I expressed in a public meeting. So I just, I do feel like. In some ways, it says that the work of this committee is incredibly important, but then on the other hand, I'm not. Sure how we balance that with the. Protecting the physical and, and emotional wellbeing of many of the people who are participating. So I just wanted to say that. And. I know that our town and other parts of Marin have also had some issues around the whole. Concept of do we have civil civic engagement? How do we make a, a community that is respectful and listens to? Difficult issues in a way where people aren't being attacked and were, you know, actually threatened. And that has been an ongoing thread, but this has been so much more intense and personal. So I don't have any solutions just to say that I see it and I want to as an ally find a way to be useful.
Thank you, Lisa. Serena.
Um, I just wanted to say that. Well, I think what happened was really awful. I can't say it was surprising. And I, I also wanted to say that. I, I do feel that being on the Res J is, is being exposed and I. I was thinking about it and I don't think if we had a meeting in person in a location that the public knew about, that I would show up because that just feels unsafe. And I don't want to put myself in a situation like that. And I think that's something to really think about. When trying to have a, you know. Transparent committee.
Thank you, Serena. I make sure I got everybody. Alright. Thank you so much. I just, I wanted to just give everybody a moment of space. Taiyu, if you can just give regular checks when we're right in the middle of time and then 10 minutes before, that'd be really helpful. Thank you.
I didn't want to interrupt Sophia. So we're at five minutes now.
Okay, so I'd like to have your permission to add 15 minutes to close a conversation. Just a thumbs up would be great. Griselda, are you okay with that? Okay. And then I'd like to just speak for one moment if I could have your permission as a facilitator of racial equity work. So just thumbs up. That's if I can have your permission. Or to the side or down. So. This is not surprising. This is people's regular experience. And. We know why he was targeted. He was targeted because he was a black man. He was targeted because he was a black man in a position of power. In the town of San Anselmo. And I want to say, I feel a responsibility as a, as a facilitator of racial equity to say that out loud. Because that is our work. And that is why he was targeted. And it's important that we name. These issues for what they are and that we don't couch them in soft language or other terms. Because if we are to face them and if we are to interrupt them, we need to understand them and face them in their full. Unfettered reality. Otherwise, we are not doing the issues and the challenges that people are experiencing justice. And the last thing I would like to add, I believe as a community and as I listen to Res J and, and public comment as. I am unbiased in terms of being neutral in my facilitation, but I'm not unbiased about racial justice. That's why I'm here facilitating you all. And I want to encourage all of us and I want to encourage the citizens of Fairfax. And the community at large who's listening to believe the stories that you hear. Believe them. Believe the stories that you hear from our. Community members of color. And I've heard a lot of pushback and attempts to soften the stories that are heard. Attempts to. Directly not accept the stories that have been told here on the screen. And I want to urge all of us. To believe the stories and accept them. And that may not be your personal experience. But that these kinds of stories are real and true and they are happening here in Fairfax. And they're happening here in San Anselmo and they are happening, have been happening for decades throughout Marin County. And if we are to do this work. And do it justice, we have to be naming the difficult things to name. And work through it together as a community. That, that's my offering as we move into dialogue right now. I'd like to suggest about seven minutes for dialogue, just to give ample time for some ideas to come to fruition. And then to try to move, we'll do dialogue and a brainstorm together. Just to merge those two sub items. And then if there are any proposals for action items. If you can give me a five minute warning, Taiyu, and we'll consider action items. And we'll need to open it up for a public comment before the action items. So there'll be an additional time. So the floor is open and then.
Are you adding 15 minutes? So five minutes before, before the end.
Not including, yes, not including public comments. That's, we have time for that, but seven right now. For open dialogue and brainstorming. Thank you. So open floor, if you'll just raise a hand and I will. I will call in the order that I see them. Griselda.
So you actually, Lisa, spoke to what I wanted to say, which is that we know why he was targeted. But another by Mayor Colbert was targeted. Another thing I wanted to say is, well. It's good to hear that he was thinking only of San Anselmo. Good. You know what I mean? It, it wasn't good, but it's better for us that he wasn't targeting others. For, for. The people of color here, I don't think it was ever about that particular. Person. That for us. This is not a new thing. This is only added on. So. I, I just want to clarify that knowing that this person was in San Anselmo only targeting. The mayor there is not reassuring. As reassuring to us as it is to other people. Because. He is representative. Of many people we have encountered. And so I just wanted to clarify that, yes, we know he was in San Anselmo. Yes, we know he was targeting. That particular individual and. We are worried about ourselves in the bigger. Frame.
Thank you, Griselda. Alexandra.
I think what I want to emphasize is that like. This, this work is hard. We knew that, like coming into it. And I think Res J is extremely important and I would never, unless for some reason like this. Committee was disbanded for whatever reason, I would never quit Res J. Because I believe in the work and I'm. And strong in the, in the, in the stance that I'm taking in these meetings. And I don't like, I'm not ashamed of it. I'm not like. Like I'm, I'm saying the things that I genuinely believe. And. I guess I, I can appreciate having the space to say it. But I want to echo what Sophia said, that there's a point where. It takes an emotional toll. And I think a lot of us are there right now. And so it's very hard to continue to move forward without acknowledging that. And it's also really hard to acknowledge it in public. But. Yeah, I just want to emphasize that I'm not scared of like saying what I think. And what I genuinely believe. But. It's hard, especially knowing that. There are people out there with real weapons and it's very easy to get a gun. Even if they were confiscated. Which I, I, I do believe I read that they were confiscated. It's very, it's very easy to get a gun. No matter who you are. So it's scary. We see, I mean. Sorry, one, one year ago, we saw what happened. And we're not exempt from that. Where people of color, people of marginalized communities. Are being killed. They're being murdered for being who they are. That's real and that's scary. So. Moving forward. Um, I, I think that. I, I, I'd like to talk about how we can keep each other safe. I know our names have to be there. And I do appreciate, I, I believe I, we used to have our last names on our Zooms and, and I appreciate that. I don't know if that was Ann, but. I really appreciate that. That our last names aren't here, but it's not hard to find us. I know that for sure. So. I'm just rambling now. Sorry.
Thank you, Alexandra. Taiyu, is that a time check or a raise hand?
Two minutes left.
Okay, thank you. So one of the items we had tonight was the offering of, of brainstorm time and potential. Recommendations to town council and I'm interested. As we're coming to a close for this section, do you have thoughts about that and, and how we could move forward with recommendations? Veronica.
Yeah. Just want to acknowledge again, Sophia, where you're at and to let you know that. Many of us are here for you. I believe all of us are here for you and I'll speak for myself to say that. Let us know how we can support you. Immediately in any way that that. Is needed. I appreciate the connection that we have with. Being able to make recommendations to town council with Bruce being available to communicate with, with us in the way that you are and then. As a liaison with the town council, as the mayor and our committee. And value that a lot. I value the incredible budget that we had been given and that we hopefully will be given again and the value of that money available through the town. And the platform and, and support in the way that you're showing up as a town staff for this meeting and running it and, and. See all of those benefits. But. That the D E I task force in Mill Valley recognized that there was a, a value in not being. Town sanctioned under the Brown Act. With public. Meetings that are recorded. I, I don't, I don't feel necessarily sure of, I don't believe it's my feeling that matters. But I just wanted to surface that. They made this shift, the, the members of the D E I task force to what's now M V free, to Mill Valley free. Because of some of these concerns, because of some of these issues. And just wanted to put that on the table as something to just. I, yeah, just to. Recognize that we could continue to move as an organization in other ways as a group of people. If it felt like that was what would make everybody feel safer, because that's more important than funding, than access to. As beneficial as all of the other benefits are. So just wanted to. See how people feel about that. Then quickly, if that isn't right on the table right away for folks. I would encourage a recommendation to town council to consider. You know, what is the very edge of what's legally required in terms of reporting our names on the website? And emails, as Bruce articulated, those feel like important recommendations. And to consider how long our videos are up and available to the public, if at all. Those feel like. Necessary immediate steps.
Thank you, Veronica. Lisa.
Yeah, I guess I have to say I often have conflicted feelings about our meetings. Just because it, it feels like we need to talk about some of these issues and yet we often talk about them in these ways that are so. Personally, emotionally revealing that I concerned that they make people more vulnerable. And I'm not sure how to, you know, deal with that. And I'm just wanting to get clarification from Veronica if she's thinking that we should be reverted to a task force as opposed to a town committee. So that we could meet without the Brown Act or what the, what the possible recommendation is. So, you know, I'm, I'm open to whatever, but I just wanted to get some clarification there because I know it has made me feel a little like. I wish there was a place to process some of this without it being in front of the entire town. And then the other hand, some of it's very valuable for people to hear, but it, I think you feel like it takes a toll on people. And it probably would anyway, but I'm just wondering if there's a way to lessen that.
Thank you, Lisa. Taiyu. Thank you Lisa. Taiyu.
Two things I wanted to note, we have five, we're at the almost five minute mark for the action item, but I did want, in terms of the Brown Act, the other committees in Fairfax are not bound by the Brown Act. So I'm, I, I understand what the thinking was, that, that the town wanted transparency, especially with the big budget, but it, it's putting us in such a tenuous position, because it's very hard to be fully, completely honest. It's very hard to have, have real discussions and, and I mean, I would be so much more comfortable if we weren't Brown Act. I don't mind having people watching us, that's fine, but having, having those recordings up forever is a little terrifying and and at the very least, I think the PPPSA really needs to be not Brown Act. I think that is, the, the comments that I hear people making on tho, at those meetings is terrifying. And I'm like, I, I feel the same as Serena. I don't think I would go, right now, I don't know that I would go to an in-person meeting. So now we're at four minutes, sorry.
Thank you Taiyu. So, question. Bruce, go ahead and then ask my question. You're on mute.
Sorry. I've been listening to all this and I wanted to, and to, for one thing, just remind us all that the PPPSA did actually in the last, in the last meeting of that committee, did actually ask to go back to council and, and ask about whether the PPPSA needed needed, what the boundaries were, whether at least we could not have the meetings recorded. Maybe, you know, anyway, we'll explore that. So that's already going to be on the agenda and I've already told Garrett that there might be something else coming out of this meeting tonight. So this is a good discussion. So, I will, I will be bringing that up to council for both the ResJ and the PPPSA, just in general, what are the boundaries? I'll research that before the council meeting, throw up with our legal counsel and then we can discuss it at the council meeting. As far as other committees in the town, other committees are under the Brown Act, but the Brown Act is doesn't specifically say that, that the meetings need to be recorded. In fact, before Zoom, they weren't. That's, none of the other committees in town, other than the Planning Commission and the Town Council in the days before COVID were, wherever they met, they didn't, they weren't on TV, whereas those two were. I don't know how many years ago it was that the TV started happening. Before that, they weren't on TV. But there was a strong desire to get them on TV. Everybody was glad to have them on TV, but that's, those are the only two that are. So, but the Brown Act is about us not having conversations, you know, off, off the meeting and discussing things that, you know, outside of the meeting and stuff. That's kind of a different thing than, than this. So anyway, I'm committed to looking into that and, and it'll be on the June 2nd, the next council meeting agenda to talk about what we can, what we could do, whether we could relax any of these requirements. It also, I'll say it's surprising to me and I, I kind of don't know what to do with it, that I, that I'm hearing that people might not be comfortable coming to an in-person meeting, because my understanding was that it like, it's always been really something I think everybody has agreed to. Certainly, I've felt that it's, it's good when we get a chance to meet each other. It's really, really nice and we, it's difficult to be doing all this with just our pictures on Zoom. So what, so I, I assumed that we were looking forward to the day when we would be able to meet in person, so I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand where this is going as far as not wanting to meet in person. And how might, what might the parameters of that be? Like, is that not wanting to meet in person if we're on video or, which I don't think we would be. Because definitely none of the other committees, I'll repeat, in town are, we don't get videoed. Now that it's Zoom, we're on Zoom and since it's a public meeting, people can come to the meeting, but recordings of it are, are necessarily put on the website. That's, you know, not every committee does that, so. We can look into that, but I'm curious about the in-person thing and just where we might be going in the time after COVID, when we don't have to meet on Zoom. Where, where do we want to go? And what might we want to do in the interim as far as occasionally having a meeting where we can, or, or just to get together or we can I'm, I'm curious about that.
Thank you Bruce. I'm going to do a quick process check. I saw Serena's hand and I saw Alexandra's hand. We're about fifteen minutes over and now I see Taiyu's hand. We're fifteen minutes over. I'm happy to stay with you as long as you need me, but one of the things that everybody was appreciating about our last meetings was that we were accomplishing more and we were being very goal oriented. And so as a reminder, the goal of this time is to potentially make recommendations to town council. We're fifteen minutes over right now. We have three speakers in the queue. We have public comment and potential action items. And so I'd, I'd like to hear how you would like to proceed. Would you like to add more time to this item? Would be an option. We can hear the three speakers, open public comment and then do action items. I'm going to throw it out to you to decide as a team and, and I'll facilitate with that decision. So Serena, am I seeing two minutes? I'm not sure what this means.
Two, as in the second thing you said.
Okay, so I see that. If everybody wants to go with the second option, just give me a thumbs up. Griselda, everybody, Bruce. If you just give me a simple thumbs up, that'll work for me. First to the side, I'm, I'm not sure what you're saying, Bruce, you're on mute.
I was writing, I kind of missed what you said, so just go ahead.
Okay. So I will take the three speakers in the queue, Serena, Alex, Taiyu. We will move to public comment and then we will consider action items. And I'm going to guess approximately fifteen minutes for this Taiyu. So Serena.
Um, yeah, sorry, my computer might die any second. I just realized it's really low, but I think, like, we should be looking into for an action item, seeing how we can just like, the same thing as the PPPSA, like, bringing it to town council and seeing what our limitations are here and I think, in terms of the in-person meeting, I'm not saying like, oh, I don't want to like meet interview. I'm saying like, I don't want to go to a meeting in public at a place where anyone can show up because they know what time I'll be there and what group will be there and like, what we'll be talking about. Especially after, you know, the events that happened in San Anselmo. But before that as well.
Thank you.
My charger, so.
Okay, Alexandra.
Okay, um, well, I was going to say what Serena said and then I was going to recommend that with the information Bruce shared, that the recordings stop altogether. I don't know if, if, I didn't realize that was like, a thing that we could have, so. That, and then, a- again, I want to advocate for mental health resources for ResJ members. I think it's incredibly important. I myself have been feeling a lot of heightened anxiety, stress levels, whatever you want to call it. There's a lot going on. So, those are the, the, the two things I'd like to put forward.
Thank you Alexandra. Taiyu.
Serena and Alexandra covered what I was going to say.
Thank you. Anne, we'll go ahead and open it up for a public comment and the public comment is only on item B. Follow-up after the racist incident that occurred in San Anselmo.
Okay, great. So the person with the initials TMC, Selroy, the email. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Hi, it's, sorry, my email goes on. It's Tiffany McGalroy. Just one of the things I wanted to add was something that Lisa said and I hope I'm still on the right thing was the narrative. Someone here was talking about that the person who threatened Mayor Colbert had mental health issues. And sticking with that narrative, that may be true, but this person is also racist, like the, the racist acts are there. And I think that it's very important, you know, both of those things can be true, that it's very important that we don't just say, oh, mental health issues, guns, this and that. It is very important that this person, you know, was very specific in their language and what they wanted to do and it was specifically racist. And I think that is where the fear comes from. I happen to be on the committee for San Anselmo and so listening to all of you is really helpful and it's very scary to know that people have all of our information. And again, just, you know, keeping the narrative as it is, like, as Lisa mentioned earlier, let's say what it is instead of skirting around it. And, you know, trying to make this narrative something that moves away from a racist act. We had a racist act in San Anselmo. And we have to either accept that or pretend it didn't happen. So I just appreciate all of you here and all of that, you know, that you're talking, what you're talking about. And, yes, I think as a community, if we're going to move forward, we have to say what it is, no matter what someone's condition and beca, condition is, because both of those things can be true. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that's it. I don't see any other hands.
Thank you Anne. I'll officially close public comment for item B. And I will open it up back to ResJ members if you would like to consider making any recommendations in the form of a motion. I've been keeping track and I would ask our note taker and Anne to help me out with the list of recommendations that I heard, because I'm also facilitating, they're definitely not written word for word. So if I misstate your recommendation, please, and I trust you will correct me. So, one of the recommendations to consider is that ResJ be removed from Brown Act requirements. Another consideration is that the videos that this ResJ, the ResJ meetings are not recorded and that videos are not posted. Also, that any videos posted are removed, to the extent that's legally possible. And there were some concerns about recommendations of whether or not we could remove names to the extent possible from websites, documents related to ResJ. And that, another recommendation for mental health services to be provided to ResJ members. And another recommendation related to Brown Act was whether or not this could be considered for a task force as a task force instead of a Brown Act committee. Serena.
I'm, I'm assuming that the task force recommendation covers it, but I, I guess I also like to add into there if it doesn't, like, ask if our meetings have to be public. And then with that, I guess, like, public comment is pretty harmful, so like, is there another way to do that? Or to set that up or to have that run where it's not so personally targeting to our members?
Public comments a legal requirement of the Brown Act?
Yeah, I'm wondering if maybe there's another way to like take it, so it's not like harmful.
Thank you for the clarification. Other, other additions to the recommendations or considerations or corrections if I didn't get the whole statement correct? Griselda.
I would like to consult with the police department or just get an idea of, of what process is in place or would be in place to investigate any, any concern we have. Like, I, I want to understand, I, 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 I'm, I'm being unclear, I'm sorry. Mostly because I don't really know what it would look like, but, but it would make me feel better if someone would say, hey, if you get a call like this or if this happens, we're going to take it seriously. And these are the three things or four things or whatever that we're going to do to, to address your concern. I, I don't know what that looks like, but I would like to speak to someone who does.
Thank you Griselda. Any other recommendations that want to be added? So we'd have placed an action item under this item B. And so if you feel so moved, this would be the time to potentially make a recommendation for an action item for recommendations to go to town council. And Taiyu, can you give us a time check?
Six and a half minutes.
Thank you. Veronica.
We've got a big motion, including all of these things. Should I try? You can all okay. I make a motion that ResJ meetings are no longer recorded and all videos that are up from past meetings be removed from public access. That all ResJ committee members' names, at the very least last names, be removed from the town website where possible. To consider the implications of ResJ becoming a task force and not subject to the Brown Act. And to consider mental health support for our ResJ members of public. Members of color.
We have a motion on the floor. Taiyu.
Can I add to the motion? Just not only members of color, I think all ResJ members.
Amendment, amendment to the motion to include all ResJ members? Alexandra.
Sorry, can I, can I make an amendment or ask a clarifying question? I, I'm, I know there's a difference between a committee and a task force. But I'm not quite 100% sure in my understanding of that. So, would it be possible to amend the, because I don't want to drag on this conversation, would it be possible to amend the, what's it called, motion, um, to remove the Brown Act from our committee and we're just like a regular town committee? Yeah.
So we have, we have two amendments to the motion and can I ask that we restate them with amendments, please? So there's clarity around voting and I'm going to take Lisa's comment. Lisa?
I just, I think we need some clarity on the different roles and requirements of task forces versus committees, because my conception of task force is that we make recommendations, then we're gone. Whereas I thought that the committee was an ongoing body that gave recommendations to the town council. I may be wrong there, but so there just may be implications for our role and what we'd like our role to be if we change who we are.
Bruce.
I I'm wondering whether this motion, which is, which is got many parts, is, is a motion that's essentially saying to to ask, ask me to take this to the town and to find out what the options are? Is that what this is a motion for or is this a motion to do these things now? And, and then as far as clarification, I'm not sure what task force, I, I wouldn't use that word with the assumption that that we all know what it means, because I don't know what it means anyway. I don't know what that specifically refers to, but this, I think the distinction that Veronica had brought up earlier with regard to the Mill Valley group was that they started out the DEI, I think it was called the DEI Task Force, but anyway, that was like what, what we are, what the ResJ was. It was a committee that was formed by the town. It was, I think they might have been planning to, that that committee would go away after they did their work. They were given three weeks, I believe, to get their work done, but whether they were going to sunset and, and the committee would dissolve on its own or not, they were a town committee and that's what ResJ is as well. And, but then the, from what I was the, from what I was, from what I learned the other day, uh, from talking with, with, uh, some of the people there, that they then, that a lot of those same people reconstituted themselves as a non-town committee. So they're not getting town support, but then they're not an official town committee. Their words don't have as much weight as it were, but they've decided that they would rather operate in that, in that venue. And so I think that's the distinction that's being referred to, if I can just clarify that. And if it's not, please correct me, but I think that's what you're speaking of, is whether to be an official town committee or whether to be a group that isn't a town committee, but you can still be a group. You know, any of us can form a group anytime we want to, so. Officially sanctioned.
Thank you, Bruce. So I could lend some clarity in a general way, un- unrelated to this decision about the difference of committees versus task forces, if you feel like that would be helpful. I think we have two very different ideas on the table, and I would ask for a re-clarification if there's a motion to be made so that uh, if people so choose to second it and we vote, we can be very clear on, on what's being moved forward. So thoughts about those two things? Alexandra?
Um, I'd like, for the, for the time being, I would like to remain a town committee without the Brown Act.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, Veronica?
I'd like to make a motion again with these edits, um, and just want to clarify from my understanding, in order to be a town committee, we are not able to be, um, removed from the Brown Act. So that is why the language of being a non-sanctioned, um, in my mind, that task force language, which I, I understand might be helpful, and some of the language that I, I just took from what we were all saying, asks town council to help us understand that difference, or town management to distinguish is task force going to relinquish us from being subject to the Brown Act? Or would we need to consider not being sanctioned by the town to be removed from Brown Act? So I will suggest the wording, and then you could see how we feel once everybody's comments have been heard.
And that's time.
Thank you, Taiyu. Can you restate the entire motion? Through the, the whole motion, please?
Yep. I make a motion that ResJ meetings are no longer recorded and all videos that are up from past meetings be removed. That all ResJ committee members' names, at the very least last names, be removed from the town website where possible. That town council articulate the implications between ResJ becoming a non-town sanctioned group, or if we are able to still be a town committee but removed from the Brown Act. And to consider mental health support for our ResJ members.
Thank you for the clarification. We have a motion on the floor.
I'll second that.
Alexandra seconds. Anne, roll call, please.
Alexandra?
Yes.
Griselda?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Nina? Yes. Sophia?
Yes.
Uh, Taiyu? Yes. Veronica?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
And the motion is passed. Thank you, Anne. All right. Thank you, everyone. A little snap love here for moving through that item. All right. Take a sip of water. Deep breath. That was a lot, and I, I just want to take thirty seconds of a quiet moment to really acknowledge uh, the suffering that was shared and the experiences that were shared, uh, and the, the pain, um, that has happened through this work. Uh, so just a thirty seconds for a quiet moment. Thank you. I'd also like to acknowledge just continued growth and development in your goals around having dialogue for learning. Uh, there was a lot of encouraging statements happening, people elicited a deeper understanding. You restated each other's points and you worked to clarify. You also empathized with the experiences of each other and worked to summarize, to understand. And so I just wanna, uh, also give some snap love to the continued growth of this team and your work towards deepening your dialogue together. I'm gonna go ahead and move us on to item C, and this item is a consideration uh, regarding the second ResJ chair position to discuss this, uh, sub-item A is to discuss changing ResJ chairs to include non-white chairs. It includes, uh, action item. So after the discussion, we'll open it up to public comment, and we have ten minutes for this item. Uh, for the public to know, this has been discussed previously, and this is a follow-up item from that discussion. And I'll go ahead and open the floor for just open dialogue. Taiyu?
I just, a, a clarifying question. Do we need to have two town council members on the ResJ?
Bruce?
Um, I can answer that the best I can, which is that that would be a council decision. Uh, and so that will also be on the agenda on January, on June second to possibly appoint as council decides a second council member. Yeah. And right now, I, just if I can add a clarification as well, right now, we've just the history for ResJ. We, it just started out kind of by default, um, more or less, Gary's suggestion that, that the two of us who were council members, Stephanie and I, were the two co-chairs. But then it was brought up that the, uh, to, to consider, uh, another other, other people being chairs, and, uh, Alexandra stepped up to that. And I believe at that meeting, no one else stepped up to that, and so currently it's Alexandra and myself who are the chairs. Um, which I'm, I have to say, I'm enjoying that. I appreciate that, and I would be happy to continue. But the, uh, uh, it also, I don't think there's anything written anywhere that says that we have to have two co-chairs. But it's kind of nice to be able to have two people to figure it out, you know? Um, anyway, that's just, that's, that's not necessarily written in stone, but there are two co-chairs.
Thank you, Bruce. And Taiyu, if you can give us a mid, midpoint time check, please? Other thoughts on this issue? Alexandra?
Um, so to be real honest, um, I think in a perfect world, it would be awesome to have two chairs that are people of color and and allow people of color to really lead the charge in conversations like this. But that's not quite the world we live in, and I personally have not received great responses when I try to communicate with staff, and that's super difficult for me. Um, I think Bruce is awesome, and I really enjoyed working with him, so it's not about Bruce at all. But it's hard when, when I'm trying to like, step into a role um, that, that I was asked to step into. I didn't volunteer. Um, it's difficult to navigate that as a young woman of color. So I'm being real honest here, but, um, so I, I don't want to discourage anyone, but I also kind of feel weird about encouraging someone to take on that hardship, because it's definitely been hard to navigate. Um, but, so, I hope someone wants to do it, but I, Bruce and I have been working well together, so, um, it's, there's no pressure here. This is just something we had said we would bring up again, and so we wanted to honor that.
Thank you, Alexandra. Other thoughts?
Yes, it has felt like, on one level, you know, this committee should be giving a lot of leadership, um, especially to people of color in the town. And yet, on the other level, we've also heard people saying that it's a lot of work, it's a lot of pressure, and that it's sort of being piled on people who are also experiencing a lot of pressure because of, um, the topic and some of the community response. So, you know, there's kind of like these pros and cons both ways. Um, I have appreciated the interface between, um, a, a, amazing community member like Alexandra, and then a council member like Bruce, who has the background and the knowledge of how the town works, and was hoping that, um, through that sort of interface, that new people who have not been, you know, like, regulars at every town council meeting and committee, um, would become more comfortable with the leadership roles and more, um, say, introduced to town staff as leaders so that they would then, you know, be able to continue to grow in that role. And so, you know, I have kind of like just these mixed feelings about how that should go forward, but, um, I do know that as a person who's even been kind of a person who's attended a lot of town council meetings, I often feel like I'm not sure how these things are supposed to run. So, um, I value us all learning better how we could be leaders on different, say, town committees. So I, I want people to be empowered, but also not just be cut loose and told, just go for it, and you're gonna have to do it all on your own.
Thank you, Lisa.
Lisa, four minutes left.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Uh, can I get a thumbs up to go ahead and move toward public comment? Or would you like more discussion? Public comment? We're undecided. Veronica?
Very quickly, I, I co-sign to a lot of what Lisa shared and Alexandra shared, um, around the nuances of the ideal. Um, both moving forward to really acknowledge the value of allowing really welcoming, um, folks of color to take leadership roles, and just the importance of that's, that precedent. And the sense of the blessings that we have in Bruce's presence and participation on the committee a- as a chair, um, and your support that you feel from him, Alexandra. So I guess I'll quickly say that I'm curious if there's any, um, buddy of color who feels like they want to not, they really want that, and that workload isn't too much for them. Or I guess you don't really know that, but that you're kind of like wanting to explore that. Um, and then my last thought would be to just really, it sounded like you were saying, Alexandra, but I didn't get it fully clear, is like, would you feel comfortable not having the privilege that having access to town council respect that is received when Bruce sends something out compared to when you don't, you know, in the, in the fact of that town council member chair position? If you'd feel com- you know, if you'd feel confident, I was kind of hearing maybe that would feel like too much, you know? So just clarification there would be helpful.
Okay, I think I understood what you were asking. Um, yeah, I, well, I also want to clarify really quickly that like, in our little ResJ like bubble, like between Anne, Lisa, and Bruce, uh, obviously I feel super supported and have had absolutely no trouble, like, being respected or like taken seriously. It's when I email other people, um, that's become really difficult. So, yeah, I mean, I, I'm not trying to like take advantage of Bruce and his power and that he's the mayor, and so they usually will respond to him over me, but it's kind of the reality. And, and so in that sense, I, 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 I think that we're kind of a good team in that way that we both bring different things to the table, and, uh, like I said, I don't want to pressure anyone to become the chair or a chair. So when, when Bruce and I are working well together and, and we both have, um, different perspectives and insights, so, um, I, I, I don't know if that clarified anything, but, yeah.
Thank you, Alexandra. And, and my apologies to ResJ and the public for my lighting right now. I feel like this is less than ideal that I'm this like very dark shape up here. Um, I had a last minute, uh, internet challenge, and so I'm at a different location that clearly has poor lighting. Um, so please forgive me for the bizarre lighting situation that's happened as the sun has gone down. Um, Bruce? You're, are you on mute, Bruce?
I'm sorry, I keep making that mistake. Um, I just wanted to throw out if it's, if it's helpful, just an observation about from, from my limited experience, which is quite limited, in terms of chairing committees or seeing people chair committees, um, both in, in town or other committees, other groups, and throughout my life. Uh, I just personally, I see the position of chair as being a, it's kind of a position of service. For example, on town council meetings, if you watch the council meetings, it's, it's often the case that the the mayor, who happens to also chair the meetings on the, on the town council, speaks last. So when we kind of go around and after some, uh, after we've heard a report or whatever, and then each council member maybe says something initially about what they think about it, it'll often be the mayor who speaks last. A, a lot of times in, in committees like the Climate Action Committee, which is kind of a similar size to this committee, and, uh, that the, when I've served as chair on that committee, I feel like I, I'm not able to say as much as I would if I weren't chair, because I'm sort of concentrating on making sure that all the voices are heard and concentrating on sort of summarizing and facilitating the conversation. It's kind of like you, Lisa, have been doing as facilitator. You try to step back and not impose your own thoughts on what's going on, but just try to your main services to guide the committee to a successful, uh, and, and productive meeting. So it's, it's kind of a different thing, because sometimes people think of a chair as being a person who's got more power or something. But in some ways, it's actually less power. But there's, there's sort of two main things I think the chair does. One is to form the agenda, sit down and work with the agenda, and that's what Alexandra was mentioning. There's this little team of Alexandra and Lisa and Anne and myself who were, who worked together a lot on getting these meetings together. So that's, um, and we each have our, our roles. That is one thing, and then the other thing is facilitating the meetings, which right now Lisa is primarily facilitating the meetings, but that may transition at some point. So that's sort of the other thing that the chair often does is to actually um, do what Lisa's been doing. I just, that's all just, maybe it's superfluous, but I just thought I'd try to clarify that as to what, from my experiences, the role of, of a chair.
Thank you, Bruce.
Lisa, we're two minutes over.
Thank you. Uh, so with your permission, I'd like to move us to public comment, just in the interest of supporting you all to meet your goals in this meeting. And then, uh, you do have an action item, so if you need to discuss further, that can happen. Uh, so Anne, can you go ahead and open public comment, please?
There are.
There are no hands.
Okay, we will officially close public comment. Thank you Anne. There we go. Thank you very much. Just had some lighting lighting assistance here. All right. So how would you like to move forward? Are there any proposals for action item in this regard? Lisa, is that a hand or a thinking hand?
It's kind of a proposal. I'm just wondering what would happen if we said that we were going to revisit this in X number of months after we've recruited new members? Or are people wanting to move ahead with the decision right now?
So that's a wondering or is it official?
That's a wondering.
Okay Alexandra.
I like Lisa's idea. But I don't remember the exact words. So Lisa, do you mind? Making that?
As well, I I can put it more in the form of a proposal, but people could still discuss it, I guess. Which my proposal would be that we revisit this issue in, I don't know, four months after we've had a chance to recruit new committee members who might because I'm not sure if any, okay, let me just back up. I'm not sure if there's other people right now who really want to be the chair. It seems to the past, they weren't there they wanted to be. But I was thinking that maybe we could revisit this in four months, four to six months, when we've had a chance to recruit new committee members.
So that was a that was a mix of thinking and a proposal. Are you interested in making a motion?
Okay, let's make a motion that we revisit this issue in four months after we've had a chance to recruit some committee members, new committee members.
I second that motion.
Okay, thank you Veronica. We have some questions. Serena, I saw your hand first and then Bruce.
Yeah, I was wondering, maybe like just in terms of technical things, like maybe instead of like four months, we could just be like, like one or two months after new members join, if that happens.
So amendment to the motion that a new Res J chair would be considered in one or two months after new members join. Is that, did I state that correctly? Okay, Bruce.
That was the same thing I was going to ask.
Okay.
Ask whether it was four months from now or four months after we got new members. That was just to clarify that.
Okay, so the the motion on the floor is one to two months after new members join.
Do you need a new second?
Yes, we need a second of that emotion.
Second.
Yes, you do. Okay, thank you so much Tyu. I can't, I can't get it out of my head every time there's a second, the song, it just plays and plays. I love it, I love it. You guys truly make this this job everything. I mean, I couldn't do it without all of you. So, all right, Anne, can you open it up for roll call?
Okay Alexandra?
Yes.
Griselda?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Serena?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
Tyu?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
And the motion has passed. Thank you Anne. I'm going to move us on to item D. This is a discussion, possible presentation of options and a potential action item. Item D, new committee members and application process. Bruce will present the application options. We don't have them written down, so I would recommend if you feel like you need to take notes, it'd be a good time to type, grab a piece of paper or your phone. You'll have an opportunity to discuss the options. Again, we're a small group tonight, so we'll just ask that our members of color go first, and I would like to open the floor more to that. And then I'll call in everybody else for the discussion of options. And then we have a potential action item to consider the selection of one option moving forward. Bruce, can you give us a summary of our options?
Lisa, it's a 40 minutes. Do you want me to do 20 minutes and then 20 minutes?
So if you could do 10 for the the application options, it shouldn't be that long. And that's 10 with clarifying questions.
Okay.
And if you'll just shout out when we get to eight. And then we'll we'll have plenty of time for discussion of options about 20.
Wait, I'm confused. 10 for Bruce and then an additional eight and then 20.
So for item A, I'll just start over. Yeah, no problem. For item A, for the presentation of application options.
Yeah.
A total of 10 minutes. And if you'll just give us a halfway point in case there's clarifying questions. Item B, discussion of options. We're looking at roughly 25. Obviously, this can all be adjusted and then we'll take public comment and and action item. Thank you. Bruce, you're up.
Okay, so this is this is based on a conversation a few months ago with Garrett. And it doesn't necessarily, there might be other creative solutions that the committee comes up with tonight. So I don't mean to limit it to these four sort of linear solutions. But these are, these are four possibilities sort of in order. You'll see what I mean. One possibility would be the way it currently is, basically, the way you all got chosen. Although the application form that the town put up has been modified by the town based on your feedback as as you all went through that process. So if you haven't looked, if you look on the town website for the for the form for applying for any town committee, it's it's actually already been modified. But so one possibility, not necessarily the one you would consider, but I'm just, this is to say there's four possibilities that we can think of. One is that it would be the town's application process and then the town council interviews people and and that's how they get on the committee. Another possibility would be that the that this committee, the Res J, could come up with an application process, an application form or or process. And then the council member, the council would choose among those applicants. Another possibility would be that Res J could come up with an application process and then interview applicants as a committee or or make a subcommittee of Res J to interview applicants. But in some way, screen the applicants yourself and come up with Garrett used the term a shortlist, you know, say that, say you have 10 applicants, but say you have three openings on the committee, you might narrow it down to five applicants and say, well, we really like these five. And then that goes to council and then council would choose among those five by presumably interviewing or whatever. And then another possibility would be Res J basically does the whole process where Rose J comes up with a an application process and then interviews people or or whatever you choose to do. And based on that, if you have three openings, come up with three people and say to council, these are the three people we recommend. There are three openings, there are the three people we recommend. And then council would, council still legally appoints people to the subcommittees. But if if one option would be for you to actually recommend to council specifically, these are the three people we like. And so that's just based on a conversation with Garrett some ways back. I think I got that correct. And and it sounded like Garrett was open to, you know, that any of those would be possible.
And then moving forward into discussion, if we could refer to the options as A, B, C, and D, just for the purposes of clarity in our conversation. So option A would be using the town application. And and Bruce, please make sure I'm getting this right. Option B is to create a Res J application. And the council interviews. Option C is that Res J narrows it down to a shortlist. And then the town council selects from the shortlist. Option D is that the Res J takes over the full process and makes the actual recommendations for the exact number of people needed for Res J. And that would be option D. So I'd like to just offer opportunities for clarification. And just to be really clear, this isn't a discussion yet. I want to make sure that everybody fully understands each option. And so I will stop you if your clarifying question veers into discussion because this is an equity issue right now and that everybody has parallel and the same understanding so that everybody can participate in the conversation at the same level. So I want to offer an opportunity for clarifying questions right now. Griselda?
Can you repeat option C, please?
Well, the the Res J would presumably come up with its own application form or process. And then the Res J would somehow interview or screen the applicants, but come up with a short list, but not narrowed down to the so like if if you had three openings, but you had 10 applicants, you might narrow it down to five applicants, but not all the way to three. Option D would be narrowing it down all the way to three and saying, these are the exact number of applicants we'd need. And this is, this is who we like the best, so. Those were just ideas Garrett had put out. There's the distinction between C and D is a shortlist or narrowing it down to the exact number.
Lisa and then Tyu. And if I could, did I get the order wrong? Okay, Lisa and then Tyu.
Just distinguish B from C.
Chris, can you distinguish B from C?
Oh, the, oh, okay, sorry. B was that the Res J would come up with an application, but then then the Res J wouldn't screen applicants at all. The town council would just interview all the applicants. So B would be the town council chooses among all the applicants. C would be the Res J narrows the applicants pool down to a shorter list and town council chooses among them. And D would be Res J narrows it all the way down to saying, these are the people, the specific people we recommend. And town council just decides whether they agree with that. And town council could still interview people. I don't know what all they would do. I doubt if, I imagine that the council would just take the Res J's recommendations in practice, but that's just.
Thank you. Tyu?
So am I understanding that B, C, and D all would be with an application that was made by us?
Actually, you could combine them any way you wanted to. You could leave the town application for any of those if you if you like the town application. So it's just, yeah.
The intent, the intent of A, B, C, D wasn't to limit. The intent was just to provide clarity to possible options for bringing on new new applicants, is my understanding. Correct me if I was wrong.
At least two questions. One is, do you want to come up with your own application form as opposed to using the town's form? You could ask that question. And then another question is, how do you narrow down applicants? But you know, the whole application process, I mean, how there was an application process when you all applied. There was a date in which you can start putting in applications. There was a date in which the application period was cut off. You know, so there's, there's a whole process there of, you know, who, how do you, how do you want to do this? How do you publicize it?
So I'm going to have us, I'm going to have us put aside the technical parts of the process and just focus on the the application part so that we can have some real clarity for the purposes of this item tonight. And we can add that to discussion if needed. We also only have two more minutes for this section. So Alexandra.
Yeah, Bruce, can you clarify that when we're talking about the application, we're talking about the the general questions that every single, anyone who is applying to any one of the committees are filling out, not the interview questions that then separate Res J's application. Okay.
Yeah, there's a general application form that the town uses in it. You check the box for which committee you're applying for and so forth. And that form has been modified. It was modified for the Res J already, but you guys gave some feedback on that form and the general form has been modified. Again, based on that feedback. So but anyway, you can take a look at it, decide if you want to change it, use your own, make more recommendations to the town. But that's the form I'm referring to. Yeah, it's the first starting form. Anybody right now today could go the, okay, we, in terms of publicizing things, if you listen to the council meetings at the beginning, there's usually announcements and they're announced that the Climate Action Committee has.
I'm sorry, I'm going to stop us. I'm going to stop us because we're getting, we're getting away from the choices and we're getting into to the other parts of the application process. And for the purposes of tonight, if we don't focus on just simply the choices, we're not going to accomplish the goal of this of this item. So with your permission, I'd like to just stay focused on the choices for applicants. And then we can determine process if that's needed. So any any other clarifying, only clarifying questions about the choices presented A, B, C, and D?
That's time.
Thank you Tyu. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and open the floor. I'm going to just keep us at 20 minutes for discussion. And this would be an opportunity to discuss the other issues at hand. If you want to potentially propose another option or bring up related comments. And then Tyu, can you give us a halfway and a five minute, please? And I do, this is a process observation that while I'm calling on people in a way that's attempting to reach all voices, people are taking very, very different amounts of time in their conversation points and it's impacting our ability to have a dialogue where all voices are heard and where we can get through the agenda items. So I just want folks to be aware of of that dynamic in the content time that you're speaking. So floor is open and I'll encourage our members who are not white to go first. Tyu?
Is there a way that we can see what the current application, town's application is? Have a screen share?
Anne, is that possible for you to pull that up? And then Bruce, can I have you mute your your mic? I'm getting feedback over here.
I I don't have it at the ready, but I can go search for it. So I'll look for it.
I've got it pulled up. I'll email it to you right away, Anne.
Thank you.
I think any of us could share, actually, it looks like maybe.
Okay, well, she's finding that Anne.
You found it?
Can you take it off screen until you find it? We can continue talking.
It's right here.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you please increase the the size of the font? Thank you. And then if you'll scroll to the top. And and scroll up again to the first question. Thank you. If you can show the first question, please. So if you could show the first question, it comes after the email address. Please explain your interest in serving this committee. And the second question. Please describe your work, life, lived experience or background relevant to serving on this committee. Res J has several categories of membership. Please check all categories of membership you would like to be considered for. Youth under 18, at large, senior 65 and over, black, indigenous and or person of color. Prefer not to. Youth under 18, at-large, senior 65 and over, Black, Indigenous, and/or person of color. Prefer not to state no preference. And so that, that's the initial application to be considered, to be interviewed.
Thanks, Anne.
Thank you, Anne.
Welcome.
On the ready, Veronica and Anne, Dynamic Duo. Veronica.
Just a quick clarification and then I'll continue to make space for other folks of color to speak. There's a Spanish application right next to that one as well.
Thank you. Alexandra.
Um, I would like to advocate for choice D. To be honest, I think A, B, and C sound like gatekeeping. So I don't want to skew anyone's opinions, but I'll leave it there for now.
Thank you, Alexandra. And Sophia, if you feel so moved, I would like to invite you to raise your hand on your screen and then I would know and I can happily call on you. Serena.
I also just wanted to support choice D.
Sophia.
I also agree with Alexandra that I think choice D seems the most accessible.
Thank you, Sophia. Griselda.
I like choice D.
Taiyo.
I agree, choice D seems like the most equitable.
Thank you. Now go ahead and open the floor.
Lisa's hand was up.
I didn't see it. Thank you. I appreciate the help. Lisa.
I took it down because I was waiting and hoping someone else would speak. Maybe this is for another discussion. So tell me if it's wrong, but I'm also just really curious about how we are going to end up distributing this request for people to apply and whether there's a way to do outreach to like, say, people who work in town or own businesses in town, or whether it's just kind of like up on the website and it gets announced in town council meetings and whoever goes onto those channels knows about it, but other people don't.
Veronica.
I'm also in support of option D. I feel, and maybe it could get clarified or it is already clear and I just am not realizing it. I feel com, I feel comfortable with the or I guess I want to check in. Does that mean that people feel comfortable with the application that we just saw? Want to use that one? And then we refer, once we've received applications, applicants to town council to ultimately be approved as would need to happen. And I, if that's all the case, I, I super support option D. And would love to ask community education and outreach if you would be open to having some printed out applications. And you could ask, I'd be happy to walk around to a few businesses or not few, but as many as we could to just hand those out and say, hey, here's a couple of applications if anybody would like to apply as an option to really make sure that we're getting as many people as possible. And then lastly, on the volunteer board, that's how we have operated in the sense that there are people who will come to our meetings. They develop a working relationship with the volunteer board. And as far as I've been on the volunteer board for three years, we then encourage those people who've been showing up to meetings consistently or showing up to events that the volunteer board puts on and encourage them to consider being members. And then direct them to the application for the town. And then they're in front of the town council and, you know, town council has never denied anybody that I've seen volunteering for the volunteer board. And I imagine similarly, wouldn't deny anybody that we'd refer to them necessarily, or at least that's the precedent I've seen set. So for all those reasons, feel in line with option D.
Serena.
Um, I just wanted to clarify, I know we like briefly talked about how, how we would be finding like applicants in another meeting. And I think we talked about there's like a bit of conversation about, or maybe even debate about giving notice to the people who applied previously about this new, like application. But I think it was kind of like, there was different opinions on it, so I can't summarize them because I forget them, but.
My recollection from that discussion was around whether or not you would open up the process at all. It was early in ResJ. And so there was a consideration of whether or not you just went back to the first applicant pool and did not open up the process, or you did both. And so that was when we had a resignation early on. This, I mean, you're, this is your decision, not mine, but the intent of this time was just a very different process that wasn't a consideration. If I clarified that correctly. Serena.
I think I also remembered, like, I'm not trying to place blame or name names or anything, but I think I remembered, like, there were some people saying, like, maybe they should be like alerted the same as everyone else because they haven't been showing up to the meeting since then or something like that, which I don't know if I necessarily agree with, but I just, I remember that being said.
Lisa, we're just under 10 minutes.
Thank you. So just a note in terms of your process here, you have agreement, not official, unofficial agreement about choosing the option D. And some of the comments happening now are around the other aspects of the application process. So it's up to you in terms of your focus right now to accomplish your goal for this section. We can continue discussion or open public comment. Serena.
I think we should open public comment. I don't want to get too deep into this.
And thumbs up side. Alexandra.
I was just gonna say, maybe we could like, if we could just decide to either maybe do a subcommittee for this, or if the community engagement subcommittee wants to, I don't want to volunteer us, but like, take this on. Maybe that's where the conversation can happen and then bring it back to ResJ, since it seems like we're all in agreeance on D, option D.
Serena.
I think there should be a, what is it called? Like a, I'm forgetting the, like a different subcommittee for it. Yes, that board.
A what?
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc. Okay. So if there's no objections, I'll go ahead and open public comment for this item. No objections. All right. So we are opening public comment for item D, new committee members to ResJ and the application process.
And there are no hands.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna close public comment for item D and open it back up to the committee to consider selection of one option moving forward. And I'd love to encourage somebody who has not made a motion before, just like Sophia did bravely at one of our last meetings. I would like to encourage somebody who hasn't made a motion before to do that tonight. Bruce.
I'm not, I'm not raising my hand to make the motion. I was just gonna suggest that, that if you did want to refer this to either an existing committee or an ad hoc committee that you formed, then you don't necessarily need a motion to choose option D. You could just, what you probably need a motion to form the committee. And then just direct the committee. This is what the group as a whole has come up with so far. Go finish the work. But that can be informal. The formal thing would be after the committee comes back with the recommendations to.
Thank you. Veronica.
Um, I think the, the, the reality of how eager we are to have new members, how essential that is for our sustainability feels like it's important to move forward with what we're able to move forward with this evening. And it sounds like if someone's willing to make a motion around which particular first step, whether we want to choose A, B, C, or D, and that the ad hoc committee would be the ones who then take in the applications and move forward with them, but that we're actually moving forward with deciding that step tonight.
Serena.
Um, I can make a motion. I've made one before, so if someone hasn't, then I'll pass it on, but.
Go ahead.
No tears, okay. I motion that we decide to make our own process and then select our own candidates to then bring to the town council. And with that, we form an ad hoc subcommittee to make that process and I don't, I don't know where we are on doing the interviews, actually. So maybe someone wants to make an amendment there.
Thank you, Serena. Any seconds from somebody who has not, or thoughts or comments done that before?
I second that motion.
So it was a little bit of a tie there because Veronica had her hand up. So we're second, we have a second motion on the table and so we need to go ahead and take roll call on that. Bruce is smiling. I'm wondering, do you have a correction for my process, Bruce? Okay. Okay, got the thumbs up. So we'll go ahead and take roll call on that, on that motion. And then we'll proceed with comments if necessary. So Anne, can I have a roll call, please?
Alexandra?
Yes.
Griselda?
Yes.
Sophia?
Yes.
Serena, I got you, right?
I was just wondering if I could get some clarification, like, on who would be doing the interviewing?
Under this item D, ResJ.
Okay, but would that be the subcommittee or the whole ResJ? I didn't, like, I left room for it in the motion, but I don't, I don't know how people are feeling about that.
I'll ask Bruce for clarifying answer. My understanding is it is up to you all to decide the answer to that question.
Right. And I was saying, we should decide it.
Um, I don't know if I have any clarification. I would see one option being that you decided now and incorporated into the motion what the whole process would be, but another option would be that the subcommittee that you are, that you want to form think about the process and, and, and then come back maybe to the next ResJ meeting with that with a proposed process. I mean, that's one possibility. I'm just.
Okay, um, I think maybe leaving it to the subcommittee, I guess, since it's not in the motion. And then yes, on it, the motion.
Okay, um, Taiyo?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Did you call my name? Yes.
That everyone? Okay, the motion has passed. Yes, Veronica.
For clarification. Did that mean that we're going to use the application that we just reviewed? Or are we saying that we want to create our own separate application in that motion?
With my, my understanding, the motion on the table and, and please offer clarification is that that is using the application that you approved in option choice D, bringing it to an ad hoc committee. The ad hoc committee will make further decisions about what needs to happen with the application process. And if that's an amendment to the application is the recommendation, and then they will bring that back to ResJ, which would then make take an action item to move that forward. That's my understanding. Okay, Taiyo, I saw your hand and I'll go back to you in a minute, Veronica.
No, I, I, I think I'm, I'm okay, but we have like one and a half minutes left.
Thank you. Veronica. And then Serena. Okay.
Happy to defer to Serena and go after her.
I appreciate that, Veronica. Thank you. Serena.
Just wondering if we should choose the members for the ad hoc subcommittee now.
You can do that now. And I do want to actually pause on what Veronica just did and I want to make note of how that is equity strategy in, in our meeting that she deferred to let somebody else go ahead of her. And thank you. I appreciate that. And yes, you can decide on your ad hoc committee now if, if you so choose.
Thank you, Veronica.
So any volunteers? Alexandra. Volunteering, okay. Griselda.
Can I ask a qualifying question?
Yes.
Are we, with the option D, are we rewriting the application?
That can be a decision of the, the subcommittee.
The subcommittee, okay, so I'll volunteer.
Taiyo, and, okay, so I have Alexandra, Griselda, Taiyo, volunteers, Serena, and quorum, Anne. We have, because I lost our quorum count since we only have eight members now. That's, we can only have four, correct?
No, I, I found out from Garrett that the total member of ResJ is still 13, even though we don't have 13 members, so we are still under quorum.
Oh, I love it. Thank you, Taiyo. Bring in the facts. Appreciate it. All right, so should I get this right? Alexandra, Griselda, Taiyo, Serena, we have four on the table for ad hoc.
It ended up being.
Yes. Anyone else? Where are, I get a, you should come. Can I get a thumbs up for moving forward with that? Okay, and my understanding, Bruce, is we don't need a formal action item. It wasn't on the agenda. Just process check. You're on mute.
Yeah, I mean, it might be good to take a vote on that subcommittee, forming that subcommittee, but it's probably fine. It's, it's the, the subcommittee can just report back next time, I'd say. As long as you're clear on who, who just went on the subcommittee, I think was fine.
Okay, so why don't we take a thumbs up just for clarity sake? Thumbs up if you're good with those four in our subcommittee. All right, thank you so much. And I would like to note that we, y'all got yourselves back on track because we are coming to item E. So goal accomplished for item D and we'll open public comment for items on the agenda. I'll come back to you, Veronica.
No hands are raised.
Okay, thank you. I'll close public comment. Veronica.
Thank you for volunteering to be on that subcommittee, you all. And I was curious if we could make a, a habit of sending like a schedule of when the subcommittee meetings are. I realize that we can't, can I? Yeah, clarification, am I allowed to show up and listen? I just can't vote on things as a member of ResJ with the subcommittees that I'm not on. In the sense that I'd love to be of support in ways that I can be, but don't need to take up space as a member of the committee. I'm just curious about how to play with that.
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, the public can attend. I don't know the answer to that. I mean, the public can attend. If you're attending as a member of the public, not as participating member is my understanding. And then I always ask Bruce for the confirmation of that Serena.
I think if you want to be on it, I don't think that's a quorum. So maybe you just want to be on it. No, okay.
Okay, if there are no more comments, I'll move us on to our closing. We good to move on to closing? All right. Next steps Anne.
Okay, so the next step, Bruce is going to find out about public records and if Res J can be alerted to emails that come in regarding that. You got that Bruce?
Um, yes.
Okay. And then, and then the rest were just action items. Lisa, they were just.
Okay, thank you. Ty you.
So I, I, just to be clear, what I was put forward was to be for all of our members to be notified if someone makes a public records request for our emails.
Okay, I'll, I'll look into that.
To be very specific.
Lisa.
Again, a little out of order, but it was occurring to me, have we had applications for Res J?
I'm starting to describe that it hasn't been in the announcements of, of openings for committees that Res J hasn't been announced since you all applied. It just sort of council has been deferring to the committee to decide when you want to start having new members.
Because I mean, I see the application online. So I was wondering if anybody, but okay, thank you.
I'm moving on to item B, items for our next meeting. So just as a reminder, these are items that will go to the chairs for the agenda planning of next month's meeting. And Lisa, I'm not sure if that was a hand again, or you were.
Just took it down. Sorry.
Okay, no problem. The items for next month. Wish that'll be June. Lisa.
Have report back on our budget requests at that point.
Thank you. Other items? Serena.
I think, you know, a progress report from the ad hoc committee we just formed for the application.
Thank you. Veronica.
And I know we have five minutes for all the subcommittees to give an update, considering the police practices and public safety alternatives, subcommittee survey that we've been talking about. I'm curious if we might have just a little bit more time to really get feedback from other members of the Res J committee as we're getting deep into that process.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no more items, I'll move us on to a process observation. Alexandra.
Sorry, I have a question that I should have asked earlier. On, I've been being CC'd on some emails that I don't think I should be getting because of the Brown Act. Is that, so if I'm not on a subcommittee, I shouldn't be getting those emails, right? Anyone who knows, just like.
Oh, you can, what you can receive. So the intent is that we send everything to Anne so that there's no accidents. It, you know, it's easy to hit reply all when you're in a hurry. But technically we can receive information. We can't engage in a response and conversation about the same topic. If you are not on that subcommittee, because that is considered a serial meeting and a commerce, and a conversation outside of the Brown Act.
Okay, so I guess what I'd like to say then is then I, can I not be CC'd on emails that I am not on subcommittees for, just in the interest of equity and like getting the same information at the same time as everyone else. I realize I guess I'm being CC'd because I'm the chair of Res J, but I just, it's, I don't think it's fair that I have access to more information than other committee members.
Thank you for that. Veronica.
One more possible item is, I'm curious if we can receive the notes that are on the action items so that we can really make sure that we're following through with our bits and pieces as a committee after each meeting. And if that can be on the agenda to discuss how we consolidate that.
I'm not understanding the last part of your question. What do you want on the agenda?
Um, I'm wondering if we can receive the notes, the action items and the next steps so that we are making sure to follow through on things that we've signed up for and on subcommittees that we know how that breaks down for our tasks.
Anne sends them out.
Okay, so there's been some confusion with that. So I have to go back and make minutes for every single meeting that we've had since November because Garrett, there was confusion on that I had to do that on top of having, having the recordings. Because the recordings were up, I didn't, I didn't understand that I had to make the minutes. So he is actually doing minutes, going back and doing the minutes for the ones that he did at the beginning of November onward. And then I will be catching up and doing all of that as well. So I don't think they're going to be perfect, but tonight's will be pretty good because I will do it right after tonight. So um, yeah, so we just are backed up with the minutes, but they will be coming.
So wow, and you're going to be our secretary too. Thank you. That's, that's usually a committee position that is hard to get someone to volunteer for. So thank you, Anne. Wow.
Thank you Anne. All right, moving on to process observation, Griselda.
Could you put the list up, please? I, I don't have it. For the process observation. I think we did really well. I think that we were especially Sophia, very brave and risk-taking and in being vulnerable. I think we did really well on being open and honoring personal accounts and that there was respect for everyone's voices and active listening and encouraging to share. I liked, there, there was nothing up for debate. I, I actually think we did really well. I don't see any areas where what, where I would be concerned.
Thank you Griselda. And then I'd like to ask that everybody take an opportunity to reflect on the norm that you chose in honor of George Floyd today. And just a quiet moment, a personal reflection about how you held that norm. Thank you. And I would like to offer an opportunity to consider our airtime at the next meeting. And so an observation that I had around the process, and I spoke to it on the community agreement that each person has the opportunity to speak, share airtime and is heard. One way to reflect on that norm in particular is to actually have somebody literally tally the minutes that people speak. So one of the things that I work to do is to ensure that I'm calling on people in a way that interrupts racism and oppression and also creates equality in, in equalness that everybody has a chance. But what I did notice is that people, if you aren't timed, which you've kind of asked to have more open dialogue, people are taking really, really, really different amounts of, of airtime, as we call it. And what I'd like to offer for our next meeting is that we actually have somebody track speakers airtime very literally on a data sheet. And I, given the Brown Act, I would not offer names attached, but what I would offer as a process observation is that the data is collected. And so say, you know, there's, there's eight of you and somebody's tallying airtime. And really it's just one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight random. So you have no idea who's attached. And it would offer you an opportunity for reflection on about how you're using your airtime as a team. So one person might have seven minutes. The second person might have 15. The third person might have one minute. The fourth person, you know, might have 12 and so on. And it just offers a deeper dive into your team dynamic and how you're sharing your speaking time, which is often also representative of the voices that are, that are being listened to and heard and lifted up in the room. But I wanted to give you some thinking time because that's a a very deep dive into how we can off for process observation in a more equitable justice oriented way. And I wanted to just present it as an offering to be considered for your next meeting. I'm interested in your thoughts about that. Serena.
Just a clarifying question. That wouldn't be like, um, if, if we were to go with that, that wouldn't be like when someone's doing a report out on a subcommittee, that would be like open discussion, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Thank you for your clarifying question. Any other thoughts? How did that land with you? How did that suggestion land? We've got a thumbs up. Any other thoughts? Bruce?
Well, I, I guess what's going through my mind is just wondering whether I spoke too much at this meeting, but on the other, and I think I did speak. If you were to count airtime, probably a fair amount, but then I feel like I was asked questions to report on. And so I'm just not sure where what I need to look at myself with regard to that, but I will, I, I will try to share airtime. And I apologize if I didn't.
That's a powerful reflection Bruce. Alexandra.
I had the same responses Bruce, that I was talking too much during this meeting. So I think it's just evident that this is a good suggestion.
And it really isn't about, it is not about a person. It's about, well, sometimes it is actually, but in this case I did not suggest it for a person. I suggested it. I think things are, you've built a very strong team. And now it's deepening the strength of your work. And, and so some of those subtleties can go unnoticed, but over time you've seen what happens when subtleties collect and go unaddressed. And so it's not about pointing fingers. Process observation is not about that. It's about just offering a lens for your team dynamics. So you all can do exactly what you just did, reflect and, and ask yourselves those critical questions. So I'll leave it there for consideration and, and then you can let me know next time how you feel about, I'll ask your permission, of course, as always. And you can let me know how you feel about, uh, take a little deeper, deeper dive into the community agreements. So if, with your permission, I will move on to appreciations. And this is a reminder, our appreciations are not closing comments. So it is just simply an appreciation for your colleagues here on Res J. And I would invite you to stay in the, the space of appreciation of colleagues and, and not closing comments. Ty you.
I, I appreciate Sophia and her honesty and her bravery and her trust in us.
Thank you Ty you. Right, one last opportunity for any appreciations for this evening. Alexandra.
Um, I just appreciate everyone's dedication to the committee and to getting to know each other personally. I think it's, it's really helpful. And Lisa, I really hope to meet you soon. But getting to know everyone else has been really awesome in, in helping to make a safe space for these meetings. So I really appreciate all of the effort everyone has put into doing the work.
Veronica.
I appreciate the new members of the public that I'm seeing who called in. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you Veronica. Serena.
Um, I just want to thank everyone for, you know, sticking to our norms and um, being willing to show up, not to not to like say something about people who haven't, but I, I appreciate us all for being here.
Thank you Serena.
And can we just appreciate Anne for everything?
Snap love for Anne.
And I just reply and say, I want to say to all of you, if you ever see me in town or around town or in the public and it's same, I'll do the same to you, but please say hi, because I would love to see you in person.
All right. If there's no more appreciations with that, thank you so much for being here tonight on this incredibly important day. And I'm grateful to be on this journey with you. Good night.